Our guests. Nancy, would you please call the roll so that we might declare a quorum?
Trey.
Yes.
Benson.
Here.
Brown.
Present.
Miller. Valencia.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Layle.
Present.
Hannaford.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Item number four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of a consideration and action on the following items: approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 2nd, 2014, and approval of claims in the amount of $109,797.84 plus estimated payroll expenses of $113,482.62. Is there a motion?
Mayor, the actual payroll expenses came in this morning for this fund at $87,121.95. The average that is used there, the estimate was derived by an annual 26 pay period average.
So with that change, is there a motion that this consent agenda be approved?
So move.
We have a motion by Benson, seconded by Layle. Any discussion?
Can we still, if we request, can we get this email to us?
The-
Expenses and the claims and that kind of stuff since we don't get it in our packet?
You don't get the claims in the packet?
Oh, I saw him mention it.
On the agenda this time?
Should have been, claims are behind the minutes. Under section four.
I apologize.
But if you would like them emailed out, do you mail them out to the finance committee, I'll be more than happy to add you to the list.
I apologize, missed the tab.
Okay, any further discussion? Clerk, may I call the roll?
Benson?
Yes.
Layle?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Fisher?
Item number six, reports from boards and officers. I'll start with the library report, a copy of which you have in your hand, and we'll go then to Joe Don for the boards and officers. Joe Don?
Okay, well, it will start off with the water sewer committee. Councilman Miller, who's the chairman of that committee, is not here, and I would leave it to offer up Councilman Fisher or Councilman Valencia to see if they would like to say anything about that meeting. Otherwise, the items that were discussed were the water and sewer line extensions to, for the new Alva concrete facility east, south of town, water and sewer line extensions for possible housing development on Santa Fe Street, an update on the automatic meter reading, meter project, and an update on the utility billing and collections policy.
I think sewer line, water sewer line extensions, Alva concrete, we're working with them very closely to try to find the best solution for that. We do have some challenges, we're going to have to work through. The water sewer line extension for the housing development on Santa Fe Street, we still don't know a lot about that yet. Just want to give you some information on that before we proceed. And then, I do think on the utility billing and collections, I do think that we've worked at some policies that's going to make it easier for water and for staffing users to be able to, the House of Clerk have policies regarding those, including bringing those to the council for its review.
Chad, did you have anything?
Okay, then on the, when was it? It was on the 8th of September, we had the airport commission meeting. At that meeting was just a lot of mostly routine items as far as approval of minutes and council reports and manager's report. The only item of any substance was the asking the airport commission to acknowledge the transfer of the surplus tractor to the city of Alva. There was some, there was some discussion about that. And the transfer process was explained to them. They asked to reevaluate it when it came time to sell the tractor that this, the new tra, that this tractor that we're transferring would be, would replace for the utility And I would offer Councilman Layle, if you'd like to make any other comments besides that, would be-
The maintenance hangar door.
Yeah.
Hangar.
There was, there was a lot of external discussion, it was under remarks, inquiries by citizens, a lot of discussion by the, about the maintenance hang, the maintenance hangar door.
That's correct.
Then tonight, we had our bi-monthly finance committee meeting. At that committee, committee meeting, we did review and sign purchase orders. We had a review of the cash and investments. We did discuss a alternative purchase order ordinance. We discussed the utility policy. We had some discussions on the water meter, the AMR water meter project. We discussed challenges that we're facing concerning the transfer, sanitation transfer station. Also discussed the ODOT traffic signal project and payment on, at Oklahoma, at 281 and 64. Chairman Miller, of course, is not here today, but councilperson Benson and Perry were both here, so if they would like to make any comments about the meeting, that would be great.
I guess I could make a couple of comments. We looked at the utility policy too. Steve and I agree with you that I believe that's going to make things easier for our office work and also more clear for our people that use that and might have some questions when we get it all finished and looked through again, then it'll be coming to the council for approval on one of these quickly. Another thing is, as Joe Don mentioned, we are having trouble with our transfer station, actually getting bids to build the project, build it, so that's been delayed again. And trying to find somebody to at least give us a bid, something, no something. And then the traffic signal at 64 and 281 is going to cost us a few more dollars than we thought it was, and we're going to have to pay our share of that upfront before they'll start on it, so that will be coming to you at the next council meeting. And I say a few more dollars, I guess I just will tell you it's right at $13,000 more than what we thought it was going to be.
Would that be a 15% increase over what we had initially?
We initially thought $37,000 is going to cost us right at $50,000.
Their estimates went up for the cost of the project from 150 to a little over $200,000. Of course, when we-
And I think at this point in time and with what we're trying to do, we can't back out of the project now, we're just going to hopefully save some money on some other projects which will cover that within a year.
And the intent of that project, of course, is to streamline the traffic flow and possibly save lives.
And I guess that's all I have to report about.
Well, then that brings us over to the finance, the finance report and the manager's Through the month of August, the city anticipates receiving about $2.7 million. This is about 19% of the budget and anticipates expending about $2.7 million through August, which is about 20% of the budget. If we compare to August 13 to August 12, 14, we see that the city anticipates collecting about 6%, 6% less, or has collected about 6% less over the same timeframe. The area which we're experiencing the biggest decline is in transfers between funds. In this category, it indicates the city has transferred about 85% less than what it did through the same timeframe as last year. When we look at some of the other categories, the indications are increases. Taxes are showing an increase of about 17%. If we examine the, just the sales and use tax through the month of August, we're going to see a 17.41% increase. That, that increase, if we look further back into the finance report and see the trend for sales tax, we can see that through the month of September, we have collected about 19% more than where we were at this time through the month of September last year. We are experiencing, I talked to some other communities over the past week or so in the area, and we are seeing increases in our sales tax where other communities in our region are experiencing up to 8, 10, 8 to 10% declines. So I think that's a good reflection on some of the decisions that this council has made. The other categories where we're seeing increases are charges for services. In this category, we're, we anticipate a collection of about 25% more than the same timeframe as last year. As far as what we are expending, again, we, for the first quarter or so, we do expect to spend more than what we bring in, basically, but we are spending about $2.7 million, about 20% of the annual budget. All categories but debt service and transfers are showing increases at this time. Most of these increases are a result of encumbrances of funds for annual payments that have maybe not yet have been made. For example, we would have received our full bill for our workers' comp, which is about $150,000, but we're only making those payments quarterly. So we're not experiencing that kind of cash outflow. But if we take all that into consideration, currently, the city of Alva is showing approximately $26,000 more in expenditures than what was either collected or billed. As far as projects are concerned, as Councilman Benson did relay in his report, as of Thursday, September 11th, when staff met by teleconference with Myers Engineering, there'd been no bids submitted for the transfer station. Nobody had picked up a packet. We did extend the bid, the bid time on that, the bid opening time to another two weeks to October 2nd. The reason for what prospective bidders that we, that Myers Engineering has contacted to try to convince them to bid on the project, what they relay is their reasoning for not bidding is the remoteness of Alva in relationship to Oklahoma City or Wichita, and the size of this project. We are currently reconsidering our bid specifications to see how that can be broken down as a contingency, and if that can be broken down to allow for less stringent bidding requirements, for example, bid bonds and things like that, that would allow some of our more local bidders to be interested in the project, we're considering that. We're also considering other alternatives to getting the project started. One of the things that I, on the 12th, after we did extend it, I talked to Myers again, we did con, we did have at the ti, on the 11th, a name of a prospective bidder that is already in Alva, and we gave that name over to Myers. He did contact them. They did seem to have an interest in the project. And then Myers also informed me that there was at least one other prospective bidder that expressed their gratitude that we had extended it to the 2nd of October. So we may still get some bids into, by the 2nd, but we're still evaluating what our contingency plan would be should that not happen. In my manager's report that went out to you, I told you that we would be advertising the water me, the AMR water meter project on September 12th and the 19th, but that has As of, on November, on September 11th, Governor Fallon announced that there would be some, we still get some bids into, by the 2nd, but we're still evaluating what our contingency plan would be should that not happen. In my manager's report that went out to you, I told you that we would be advertising the water me, the AMR water meter project on September 12th and the 19th, but that has As of, on November, on September 11th, Governor Fallon announced that there would be some drought grants available for projects which highlighted the responsible use of water. The state has allocated about $1.5 million for eligible cities, counties, water districts, and other public entities to help fund projects that highlight responsible use of water. Grants have been capped at $500,000 each. The deadline for applications is 11/26/14. Two of the eligible categories for water efficiency are the replacement of existing broken, mouthout, now functioning water meters, or upgrading existing meters with automatic meter reading systems, and two, retrofitting or adding automatic meter reading capabilities or leak detection equipment to existing meters. With the knowledge that we, there is the potential of a $500,000 grant, I did hold off on releasing those RFPs for the application of that grant, because a lot of times if we already have the process started and then try to apply for a grant, it's an ongoing project and they won't award a grant to an ongoing project. So by not starting the project, not releasing the RFPs, that still will put us in eligibility for the grant, that grant process. So we have delayed that to get that grant application in.
Do you know which agency is affording the grants?
I believe the agency that's being, that it's going to be funded through is Oklahoma Water Resources Board. We are using Myers Engineering to submit our grant application, and the reason for that is Myers Engineering has a partner employee that has a previous relationship with Oklahoma Water Resources Board that may prove to be beneficial for us in this, in this instance. So trying to use everything we can to try to get that money, or get some of that money. We do have some, I'll be honest with you, we do have some challenges. It is a, it will be a very competitive grant. It is a point, it is a point allocated grant through the Water Resources Board, so we do have some challenges. It's not a surefire thing, but I think it'd be irresponsible of me not to try to get, try to apply for it, and if that means delaying our project another few weeks, I think it's We've been working on and talking about annexation south of Alva, the prospect of annexation south of Alva for quite some time. I have taught, mentioned it several times over the past few months. Right now, staff is preparing recommendations for zoning in this area to be presented at the next planning commission meeting on September 22nd. We also have sent out letters to all of the people that would be affected by the annexation and would be affected by the zoning, to invite them in to come in and talk to me about what their zoning, what we would recommend for their zoning, and if that is appropriate for their plans or not. Last week, I had several meetings with several groups of people to discuss this, outlined what we had. There were some changes that we're going to look at to the zoning that would be presented at Monday night's meeting, but after explained what we were doing and how it would affect them, most of the people I have talked to seemed to have been satisfied with the answers that they got. Do have more meetings this week with people, so we are, it is a continuing process. One of the things I wanted to, I wanted to add to the report is, a few months ago, at the beginning of this budget year, we talked and we added a part-time code enforcement officer, and I wanted to kind of give you an update on the impact that has made. This officer has made approximately 100 contacts since they started work, and only seven of those have actually been, only seven of those contacts we've actually had to send to Public Works to address. So 93 out of the 100 have actually addressed their yard issues. That's what we've been focusing on over the past summer months, our yard issues, tall grass and weeds. She's been, you know, the officer has been focusing mainly on the south side of town and the major, the main thoroughfares through town. It seems to be having some effect, a positive effect. With, with the tall and, tall grass and weed season kind of coming to an end, I've instructed the staff to refocus their time on trashing yards and abandoned vehicles in streets to try to address those issues. I know over the last few years, those are some of the biggest issues that I've heard about and complaints about is the trashing yards, abandoned vehicles in streets, and tall weeds and grass. They're focusing on that, and will hopefully have the same, same luck on that aspect of it as we've had, we have apparently had on the tall grass and weeds. We do have several, we still do have several positions open. Right now, we do have police officer position open, a couple of sanitation worker positions open, a couple of street department positions open, water and sewer worker positions open, and we would look at seasonal people for any of these positions. I do know that police department was interviewing five potential candidates for their open position today. That was reported to me. Our sanitation workers, that's a fluctuating position. We have a lot of turnover in that area, but we did hire, or we're looking at hiring at least two people for that department as of today. We have put on one street department worker as of today to start the process with them. We still need another worker or two there. Water, water sewer workers haven't got any applicants on. We've actually been looking at other methods of trying to attract people, but that's been a, that's been a challenge for us over the past three years, the water and sewer department. As far as a street progress report, since the August report, we have been making some headway on our 14, 15, physically our 14, 15 street repair projects. They've completed the first portion of repairs on Santa Fe from 5th to Noble. We did put a hold on that project to complete it because that is one of the project, one of the areas that we are looking at, water line or sewer line, a small extension. Didn't want to get it, the street completely finished and then have to go back in and dig it up, so we've got it all zipped up. It is drivable. It is not the most conducive right now to driving. I mean, you're not going to get stuck on there or anything, but it's a ground-up street. But we're going to be wrapping up our sewer and water project there pretty soon, at least get some determinations made and let them, turn them back on to finish this, finish that street. Once, once they, once we finish those repairs, they will come back in and chip and fog seal those portions of the street. Currently, the street department is working on Choctaw from Noble, from Noble to 5th Street. This is a chip and seal project. They've been working on that for the past couple of weeks. They came off of it this, last week and this week to repaint the crosswalk spaces, parking spaces and center lines around the square for the car show up around. We had a small crosswalk project over by the Lutheran daycare. We've got the striping projects that were needed to get accomplished down College and up around that area of town. And so they've been issue, working on those for the last week and this. The street department is still working to address the issues which were outlined the first of the, were first of this repair season, but with some of the delays that we have seen, this repair season may last past the timeframe that it had in previous years. We, you know, it may appear that our crews are jumping around, but we do have prioritized, we have prioritized our plans, and we are working to get them completed during the warmer weather before winter. And mayor and council, that would be my manager's report and my street report and any other reports that I have at this time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that I could.
Any questions or comments?
Did we have some trash trucks break down last week, or another several blocks that didn't get their trash picked up on Friday?
Not that I'm aware of. I'll follow up on that and find out, but to my knowledge, we didn't have any trash trucks broken down last week. That would be something I'll, I'll need to follow up on.
Okay, moving on to item number seven, discussion and action to change monthly meetings to once a month. This was first proposed by Councilman Benson. We had it on the agenda at the last meeting, discussion only, and so it is now before the council again with any action that you might desire. Joe Don, did you want to speak about?
I don't have anything to add, other than what I had talked about last time. If this is something that the council wants to do, there are obviously some things that will have to happen before we could implement it. You know, we would have to address our purchasing policy to, and have it word, have it passed as an ordinance so that we could go ahead and make our, our vendor payments on a timely and regular basis. There is all, I've talked to the city councillor about this. There are also some ordinance changes that would be required to make the move if this is what you decide you'd like to do. This is one of those items that doesn't make a lot of difference to me. I'm happy one way or the other. I've got no feel, I mean, I'm, we continue twice a month- I've got no feeling, I mean, I'm, we can continue twice a month or make the move to once if that's what you see fit in doing. There would be some challenges. It may, it may take a few more special meetings. There may be some things crop up that we have to deal with between meetings, but it would eliminate times when us, for us having to meet that apparently we just take care of routine business, such as the passage of plans and minutes.
Is there any additional expense involved in these ordinance changes?
None that I am aware of at this time. I will say this also, is that any change, the city needs to probably look at making some changes to the purchasing policy and our purchasing guidelines, but, you know, some of the, the most, I guess the most important change that would be highlighted here for this particular action that takes place is to allow us to make those payments on a regular basis. If we continue with two, twice a month meetings, we're still making our payments on a regular That part of the ordinance could be either removed or modified to keep things operating the way we have them operating now, but some of the other changes, as I'd outlined, to the Finance Committee, in my opinion, probably still need to be made as far as purchasing guidelines and how things-
...the progress of those projects is going to be very important. And I think the other reason, I think, is that, you know, we meet twice a month, and I think it gives the public an opportunity, about two times a month, to be able to come to the council and address concerns. Moving that to one time a month, I think, will give them a little bit of access. So those would be really my reasons for not wanting to, to move the largest system into schedule.
Would anyone else like to speak to this? Councilman Benson, you had initially proposed this.
It, it, I would like to see this go to just once a month, but it doesn't make that much difference to me. I mean, it's not a bigger diet, you know, for me, it's just a suggestion I had, mainly because of those meetings that we have, where we just basically come and approve the minutes and the claims and a couple other items of even that, the business manager's report, and that's it, you know? That's one of the reasons I suggested, feeling of the council, whatever they want to do.
Would anyone wish to make a motion to change them to monthly meetings?
Mr. Valencia, is this something you would be against forever, or maybe in six months when some of these projects are-
I think-
-on the ground and running, or?
No, I'm not against it forever. I think if we were at a point where maybe we didn't have quite so many large projects, as we switched over to the accounting system, I guess some of the guys worked out on that, I can see us revisiting that this at a later date, perhaps. My opinion would be different than, I think, at this point in time. I don't feel like I can support it, but I'm not against the knowledge that that may be given in the future.
Do you wish to table this for a later meeting? Anyone?
If there's no motion made, there'd be no action taken. It could reappear on a future agenda.
Okay, so no action will be taken on item number seven. Item number eight, discussion and action on application from Don Jones and Aaron Lee Province to withdraw retirement funds for Mac Province from the city pension plan in a lump sum. Joe Don?
Well, our pension system allows for lump sum withdrawal, but it needs the, it needs the approval of the council to do that. The council needs to acknowledge that they are making that lump sum withdrawal. Ms. Jones and Mr. Province are the co-beneficiaries for Mac Province. Mac Province did pass away earlier this year, and they are just asking for that lump sum beneficiary payment to be made out to them. My recommendation at this time would be for the council to vote, vote to, to acknowledge the, vote to acknowledge the withdrawal of Mac Province's funds by his co-beneficiaries, Don Jones and Aaron Lee Province from the city's pension plan.
Is it on the top that says Don Brooks, and at the bottom it says Don Jones? In the background?
It is Don Jones. Brooks, the background must just, I don't know how I got Brooks. I apologize for that, but it is Don Jones. Yeah, it is the, the, the item title is correct.
Is there a motion that this application be approved?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Valencia, second by Benson. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Valencia?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Lale?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number nine, discussion and action on an application from Corwin Madison to withdraw retirement funds from the city pension plan in a lump sum. That's under tab number nine. Joe Don?
Well, Mr. Madison has requested that he draw his pension funds out. He was a short-term employee here with the City of Alva. Again, our, our pension plan does allow for him to withdraw that out. My recommendation would be for the council to acknowledge that withdrawal.
Is there a motion to that effect? A motion by Lale? Second by Henniford. Any discussion? How long was Mr. Madison employed by the City of Alva to you?
I believe he was employed with the city for approximately a year.
Okay.
And he can still draw that out?
It's his money. What he's drawing out is the portion that has been, that he has contributed.
Oh, okay.
That is his contributions.
All right, I understand that.
And different than Mr. Province's, which the contributions there, of course, he was, Mr. Province was getting a retirement plan, so they are withdrawing in lump sum what his total retirement would be.
All right, I understand.
Yeah. But, but now, yeah, it is just his contributions. Anything the city, the new contribution the city may have made stays into, stays in the plan and enhances the plan a little bit. This would not negatively affect our pension plan at all.
Any further discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Lale?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Henniford?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Henniford?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Item number 10, discussion and action on ordinance number 2014-44, amending the employee retirement systems, defining benefit plan of the City of Alva, Oklahoma, to incorporate the definition of spouse, providing for effective date, providing for repealer and severability, and declaring an emergency. Tab number 10. Joe Don?
Well, our retirement fund notified me last week, or on September 8, that we needed to make, to make this ordinance change to keep us in compliance with the IRS. Basically, what had happened was that there's been a federal change. The Windsor Amendment was passed that did define the definition of spouse as it relates back to retirement plans. And the OMRF, our Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, their master plan, their master organization did vote and approve this to keep everybody in compliance with IRS, and we just need to approve the ordinance. The ordinance has been given to the city attorney, and he approved it as to form an contract.
Is there a motion that an ordinance number 2014-44 be approved?
Okay, the repertory of ordinance number 2014-44, amending the employee retirement systems, and define benefit plan of the City of Alva, declaring emergency.
We'll have to-
Emergency.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brown. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Valencia?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Lale?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Item number 11, consideration and action to approve or disapprove the street closure application for the annual Big Cruise and Car Show, under tab number 11. Joe Don?
Yes, as they do annually, RACE has, the RACE organization has submitted an application for street closures around the square for their annual Big Cruise and Car Show. The blocks that would be affected would be the 400 block of College, the 4, 5, and 600 blocks of Barnes, the 4, 5, 600 blocks of Flynn, and the, what, the 400 block of Fourth Street, and the 300 block of Flynn from 7:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. on 9/20. Also, streets that would be closed would be Government Street for those, from 5:30 p.m. on the 19th until 3:30 p.m. on the 21st. These are the usual streets that the event asked to be closed. The city has, the city has been requested to provide some barricades for the event. Race and the car show event is insured through the event coverage provided by the Alva Chamber of Commerce. This, this annual event is a big economic boost to our community. It has always been well-received, and I would recommend you vote to acknowledge the closure of each street for the Big Cruise and Car Show.
So moved.
Motion by Benson?
Second.
Second by Lale. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Benson?
Yes.
Lale?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Henniford?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Lale?
Yes.
Henniford?
Here.
Miller?
Miller is absent. We have a quorum. Item number three, discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved at AUA meetings, will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 2, 2014, and B, approval of claims in the amount of $53,123.97 in estimated payroll expenses of, and Joe Don, do you wish to correct that at this time?
The, the actual payroll, the estimated payroll expenses were $25,544.46. Actual payroll expenses came in this morning at $17,640.30.
Okay, is there a motion that the consent agenda be approved?
So moved.
Moved by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Henniford. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Fisher?
Yes.
Henniford?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Lale?
Yes.
Henniford?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Lale?
Yes.
Henniford?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Lale?
Yes.
Henniford?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Lale?
Yes.
Henniford?
Yes.
Item number 13, remarks and inquiries by citizens. Jewel, I see you're here this evening. Did you have any comments?
Well, I have been trying, my best to get at the citizens, they grow their own weeds, and pointing out who is the city agent, probably, in my heart. So I'm hoping that people there are kind of in senses, and get out there and get that clean up, though some folks might even want to pay for it. But those other folks that come out there, get out there. And I appreciate, and I do see that some of this is coming true. And I noticed that the weeds are gone from across the street behind the professional building. However, I think they're going to need these sprayed because they're just cut off. It's a fair expectation, in fact. And I appreciate you asking me this.
You're very welcome. Anyone else? Any remarks or inquiries by council members? Hearing none, we'll close that meeting and open the meeting of the Utility Authority with a call to order and a roll call. Nancy?
Creed?
Yes.
Benson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Lale?
Yes.
Henniford?
Yes.
Miller?
Miller is absent.
We have a quorum. Item number three, discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved at AUA meetings, will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 2, 2014, and B, approval of claims in the amount of $53,123.97 in estimated payroll expenses of, and Joe Don, do you wish to correct that at this time?
The, the actual payroll, the estimated payroll expenses were $25,544.46. Actual payroll expenses came in this morning at $17,640.30.
Okay, is there a motion that the consent agenda be approved?
So moved.
Moved by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Henniford. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Fisher?
Yes.
Henniford?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Item number five, discussion and action to declare surplus certain items from the homestead.
decorations that need to be disposed of, that are no longer in use by the homestead. They're probably still of use to somebody, just the homestead's not using them any longer. Along with some of these other items such as jigsaw puzzles, craft items, books, some lawn chairs, a little bit of miscellaneous furniture, and since they went to their new way of serving meals, meal trays are all surplus. A lot of those items are still good, they're just no longer needed at the homestead. All funds that would be raised from the disposal of these items would be put back into the homestead through the homestead, or into homestead activities through the Sherre Medical Center Foundation. Items that just need to be declared surplus and either saved for salvage and then disposed of, or something along those lines would be, we've got a few refrigerators out there that just need to be salvaged out. We can take a few more parts off of them, but once we've taken those parts off of them to reuse, they're really of no use to us or anybody else. We've got some toilets the same way. We've got a few doors, phones that are no longer, no longer usable. We've got some carpet pieces that were there when the, I guess, remain, from when the homestead was originally built and the carpet was installed. Some of these things we're going to try to maybe cut up and salvage, like the carpet pieces. You know, I talked to Mr. Parker about whether or not those items could be cut up and used for doormats or something along those mains until they're just worn out and disposed of, some things like that. Items that just need to be declared surplus and discarded are, we've got some, some items that are just beyond reasonable repair, such as lawn chairs, lawn wagon, some table linens, and any other item, other miscellaneous items that are not suitable for salvage, salvage of parts that just need to be discarded. The other advantage to doing this is we'll be able to clean out a, clean out and better organize our storage shed. We'll be able to clean out and re-rent several storage closets. And there's at least one bedroom suite that would be cleaned out and be able to be turned into a rentable, be turned into rentable space. And at this, this time, I'd recommend, if there's no questions, that you declare these items surplus and authorize their disposal.
Is there a motion that these items from the homestead be declared surplus? Motion by Valencia? Second by Fisher? When I first read this, I thought, gosh, I've got a room full of holiday decorations too. Any further discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Lael?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Item number six, discussion and action to acknowledge the fire hydrant replace, rebuild, and repair project to J.T. Williams Construction in an amount not to exceed $54,455. Joe Don?
Well, during the beginning of this budget process, we did identify that there were numerous fire hydrants around town that needed to be replaced because of either their serious need of repair or just to make them more operationally fit for the fire department. We had originally budgeted about fifty, an estimated $55,000 toward the replacement of these hydrants. This project allows the fire department to, allows the fire department the ability to protect the, these areas of town better in the event of a fire. Right now, they do, there is fire protection there. I don't want to leave anybody to believe that there's not. We may have to lay a little extra hose to get a good fire hydrant, to get to fire protection in those town, those areas. The J.T. Williams Construction Company is located in Bynum, Texas. They are a company that specializes in the repair and the replacement of fire hydrants. The way we found this company is, one, through their reputation and through a website that is dedicated to fire hydrant repair. There is evidently an organization out there that promotes the repair and replacement of fire hydrants and companies advertise on that, or are listed on that website. There, and as I perused through that, through that list of vendor, possible vendors, I think I only found one that was even in the state of Oklahoma. And when I inquired from Chief Trickle about that vendor, they did not, they did repair, they didn't do any of the replacement that we were needing to have done. So this company was willing to come to Alva and do the repairs here and complete the, and do the replacements that we are needing to have done. It will be paid for through the, the water maintenance budget. That's where this, that's where these funds were originally allocated. And with the, some of the areas that we're going to be looking at replacing, the hydrant at the corner, there's going to be about 12 of them. The hydrant at the corner of Fifth and Mill, the hydrant at the corner of Santa Fe and 13th, the corner of Flynn and 8th, Barnes and 10th, Barnes and 8th, Church and 10th, Locust and 8th, Oklahoma and 13th, Maple and 10th, Olive and 5th, new installed around the new image dinner, and then again, then another one at 4th and Oklahoma. The contract price to replace the hydrants is $1,500 each. We've estimated the cost of new hydrants and valves and miscellaneous fittings based on our historical purchasing ability at $2,000 each. The company, J.T. Williams Construction, does feel that they have some contacts for hydrant replacement that may get us a little cheaper than that. So we're evaluating the cost of those hydrants as we evaluate this bid. And when we award this bid, those will be evaluated even further to see, so that we get the best hydrant for our money. There are several other areas that are going to be either completely overhauled or just minor replacements and repairs needed on them. And again, the total, the total bid price is $54,455. And at this time, I'd recommend that you acknowledge this, the fire hydrant replacement, rebuild, and repair project with the J.T. Williams Construction Company in an amount not to exceed $54,455.
We have our Assistant Fire Chief with us this evening. Mr. Miller, do you have any comments on this proposed project?
I just personally watched these guys work. These two guys that came up, seemed like they had a whole lot of knowledge. And we actually sat down, visualized, and how they did it, and the processes that they took into consideration and commitment. And they seem like they know what they're doing, and they're doing a pretty good job. They're using optimal water for each hydrant, but they're fixing it.
And this is certainly a project that we've been, been needing to do, so it's a good that we have the funds to do that. Is there a motion then that this bid be accepted and the amount of the bid will need to be mentioned in the motion?
I move to acknowledge the fire hydrant place rebuild and repair project to J.T. Williams Construction in an amount not to exceed $54,455.
Is there a second? Second by Benson. Motion by Valencia. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Valencia?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Lael?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Fisher?[1692.34]